Good morning, everyone. The Bellflower City Special Meeting of the Bellflower City Council is called to order on Wednesday, April fourteenth at ten oh one A M. Before we begin, please note that all public meetings should be recorded. When a participant logs in via a computer or calls in to join the meeting, their name and or phone number will be visible to all participants. Unless you're providing public comment, your audio will be muted and your video will be disabled. Persons wishing to be audience members to the meeting may do so anonymously. Anonymous participants, however, will not be recognized for public comment. Persons who seek to bypass the city's host controls will be dropped and blocked from the meeting. Thank you for your cooperation. Roll call, please.
Myra, you're muted.
I can't hear.
Still muted.
Myra, I believe that your audio is not coming through.
Check the volume.
Any better?
There you go.
Okay.
All right.
Sorry about that. Mayor Coops? Mayor Pro Tem Dutton? Councilmember Hamada?
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Here.
Councilmember Santanez?
Here. Is there a motion to excuse the absence of Mayor Coops and Mayor Pro Tem Dutton?
Yes, so moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hamada, second to be Councilmember Sanchez, to excuse the absence of Mayor Coops and Mayor Pro Tem Dutton, let the vehicle reflect that they're excusing themselves because of property conflicts. Without objection, that will be the order. Public comments, Mr. Stewart.
Yeah, pursuant to Government Code, section five four nine, five four point three, they publicly address the city council on matters listed on the agenda. Those wishing to speak at an agenda item must utilize one of the methods listed on page two of the agenda. You'll be given three minutes to address the city council. Attempts to provide comment at times not designated on the agenda result in the city dropping you from the meeting.
Before we begin, if you would like to speak, please use the raised hand feature. If by computer, it appears under the participant tab, if by your phone app, it will appear under the more button at the bottom right-hand corner. Or if by telephone, please press star nine to raise your hand. You'll be called upon in the order receipt. You can then unmute your microphone so that you can provide your comments. Do you have any public comments this morning?
I'll give the public a moment to utilize the feature.
Thank you.
I'm not seeing any public comment at this time.
Okay, so we move on to item four A, Mr. Stewart.
So this is consideration of possible action to receive file and provide direction based on the report recommendations by Recast City regarding allowing small-scale and artisanal manufacturing in downtown along Bellflower Boulevard between Alondra Boulevard and the southerly city boundary. As the council is aware, this item was continued from a previous special meeting that we'd scheduled. And I appreciate the city council and Ms. Prus for making the time to reschedule this and to hold this hearing. I'll let Jim make the initial comments and then he'll turn it over to Ms. Prus.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Good morning, Councilmember Santanez and members of the city council. So as you heard, the item before you today is the presentation of Recast City's final report and recommendations regarding small-scale manufacturing in the downtown as another tool to keep the momentum of downtown Bellflower's revitalization going. Our first workshop took place on January twenty eighth, twenty twenty-one, and since then, staff and Elana Prus of Recast City have been busy with small group Zoom meetings and individual interviews to gather data about downtown Bellflower. Today is the culmination of all that work. This has been pretty much a whirlwind process, but a very fun process at that. Elana has been a great partner on this project and her enthusiasm and passion are infectious. So based on the report and coming presentation, staff is recommending the city council provide direction regarding the recommended implementation actions outlined in the report and presented in the presentation. As Elana will explain, these are actions that the city can take in the next three to twelve months to begin moving the effort forward, and they fall into the following five categories: land use policy, business mentorship and support, buy-in from property owners and developers, branding and promotion, and programs to draw in the business owners and customers. So with that, no further ado, I will turn the mic and the presentation over to Elana Prus of Recast City.
Thank you very much, and thank you, council members, for hosting me today for this discussion, for this presentation. And honestly, just to have the opportunity to meet the wonderful business owners and advocates of your community who I had a chance to meet with during this project, both with Jim and with Beth. People believe in your community in such a way that it stands out as compared to pretty much any other city I've worked in in the last number of years. And I want you to sort of hold that understanding in the center of what we're going to talk about today because I think that the potential of what we're talking about is very real and the hopes and dreams of your community members and business owners already in the community are really centered on this potential and wanting to be actively a part of that. So thank you for inviting me today. I'm going to share my screen and walk you through the information from the report, although I understand that the report has also been shared with you. I'll go through these major points, invite you to ask questions. That will certainly at the end will invite you to ask any clarifying questions, but also any questions about specific programs that you find of interest. The number one thing I hope that you take out of this is that all of these things are very realistic for Bellflower. All of these things are very possible for the work that you want to do. And many of them are, in fact, actions that you can take in the next few months. And I highlight a few of those really immediate actions, not as a requirement, but as pulling out things that I think are very direct for you to take on in the near term. So our method, I know I spoke with you guys just a month, a month and a half ago, but I wanted to just give you a brief overview of what this method looks like. First is we worked together to establish clear outcomes. What does this mean to have a vibrant downtown in Bellflower? What does Bellflower Boulevard mean to the community? What are we trying to achieve? We then work together, and when I talk about we, this is Jim and Beth really working hand in hand as partners on this project with me. We worked to identify small-scale manufacturers, different community leaders, folks that would help us connect to different kinds of business services and a number of other people. And we did one-on-one interviews with these people as well as hosting a number of small group discussions. Part of those discussions were identifying what works well already within the community or what are there assets that are already in the region that you can take advantage of? And what are some of the essential gaps that are out there with this goal of creating the vibrant downtown, creating a place that people want to linger and pop into shops and spend time with their family that both speaks to the people who live there now and any future development you want to do? And then identifying some of those short-term wins that can help you build for the long-term gains that you're working on achieving. So if we talk a little bit about what people wanted to achieve, it's important to think about, sorry, tech questions, okay. The clear outcomes that people talked about the most were really about this idea about a thriving downtown with local businesses, lots of foot traffic, and good-paying jobs. These are some of the themes that came up as we asked people about, you know, what's your magic wand vision of downtown? What do you want it to become after all of this work? A lot of other really specific pieces came out of these conversations as well. And when we can get really specific about the outcomes, I believe that it makes it much easier for us or much more straightforward for us to achieve those outcomes. So people talked about wanting a place to stroll, see people, and visit local businesses. People talked about wanting to have local shops that cater to the current residents, but also that would be an attraction to visitors to the community. A downtown with good-paying jobs and a diversity of business owners that reflects the diversity of your community. A mix of housing with these new shops and new development, particularly of housing, that goes in alongside the older buildings, this combination of the modern and the old-town feel. The combination came up in a number of conversations. And overarching over all of that, people talked a lot about the feeling included and the family feel of Bellflower and really wanting to create a place that showcases that feeling and that culture and that unity of the community in one place. And that came through in a number of conversations. So this is where we're aiming. One of the things that I really found exciting is that when we started to talk with the property owners and with the business owners in downtown in particular, they talked about locating in the city because of this wonderful community feel, because of the support that they're getting from the city, and because they do see this untapped potential of the downtown. They see it on their eyes, and this, to me, is a perfect moment to take hold of it and build on that. And that is a really exciting thing to sort of walk into from my perspective because it means that people already recognize this unique moment that they're in and they're ready to move with you on it. So then, the next thing we looked at from all of those interviews and the small group discussions, we compile the assets that really stand out about the community. They might be about the community overall, but we really still focus on what are the assets that are going to be most important to achieving those clear outcomes that we were just talking about. And so some of the assets that came up in the conversation are talking about the blue-collar employment, family-oriented, and with this youthful energy of the community, that people want to be a part of things. People talked about that the city is distinct and that people really love that it is distinct in the county and in the region, that it isn't like all of the towns around it. People also talked about this incredible amount of goodwill and support within the city from their friends, from their family, from their neighbors, from other business owners. But they also talked about the really strong city leadership where they felt like staff from the city really not only reached out to welcome them, but to say, how do we help you? How can we help you solve the challenges that you're facing to open a business here? How do we help you with services, with funding? Really, in this very detailed, direct assistance model, which we don't see in a lot of communities, but which is making a very real difference in the businesses that are opening, especially on Bellflower Boulevard. People recognize that downtown's presence and attraction is growing, and that's a really strong asset. But also the city's location and highway access in general, where it's positioned, is a strong asset, that it's easy to get at, this freeway access and this in-between-ness that a number of people talked about where friends could meet up in Bellflower because it's in the middle, which I thought was sort of fascinating looking at the region. There were a number of challenges that also came up in the discussion. And the challenges, similarly, were focusing on things that are going to make a difference for the downtown, for Bellflower Boulevard, for creating that vibrant place that people are talking about. One is that people recognize that there's a significant amount of deferred maintenance on a number of existing buildings in downtown. And this actually creates a barrier for other people making investments in their building, especially anything that's sitting vacant for long periods of time. But a number of the storefronts are very large footprints. They're based on old commercial use models and not what we need today, and they really don't meet current retail needs or storefront needs. Those absentee and neglectful landlords that are not only deferring maintenance but leaving properties vacant are, in fact, depressing property values. In a lot of cases, when we have vacant properties, it decreases the other property values on that block upwards of twenty percent. That's on a national basis, that's not Bellflower-specific. And this is a really major barrier to future investment and also to the sales tax revenue that other businesses can bring in that are dependent on foot traffic because of those depressed values. The truth is, the perception of downtown lags the reality. There are a lot of people who are ending up in downtown for the first time saying, I didn't know this was going on, I didn't know this was here. And so that perception is lagging. And there's minimal small-business development programming. There is that very specific one-on-one support that the staff is providing, but there's no programming that's helping businesses, people, startup businesses or scale their businesses in a cohort or in an organized fashion that's also building that connection between these business owners, which is something we've seen be very important for other cities. Additionally, there is no density or significant amount of housing downtown that really limits the foot traffic that you'll be able to generate downtown and limits the market and the use of the space. The public spaces are not particularly effectively used or are not easy for folks to access to host events themselves, which is a big barrier for entrepreneurial people who would like to be able to create events and outdoor programming since your weather is beautiful nearly year-round. This can potentially be a great asset, but that barrier of how people use the public space is a big limiting factor. The design of downtown is also a bit of a challenge because the road is wide and the buildings are short. It doesn't create this enclosed feeling. We usually, for the width of your road, we'd usually look for buildings that are a couple stories tall, at least two or three stories tall, which is what starts creating that more intimate feel for a person walking on the street. And so it limits the feel of the place as feeling protected, and there are some things that can be done about that. Additionally, currently, the zoning and permitting do not allow artisan manufacturing as a permitted use in storefronts. And that's obviously a very clear barrier to some of the work we're talking about. And then the D S D zone, the way it is currently written, promotes a suburban-style development south of the freeway versus a village style, which I do believe is, in fact, what's coming for you south of the freeway and worth talking about. So those are the big challenges that came up in regards to how are we creating this downtown that has tons of energy and tons of people and very successful businesses and storefronts that are filled, where people are strolling and really appreciating that pride of place? As Jim mentioned, the recommendations coming out of those assets and those challenges fall into five major categories. And what I'm going to do is walk through each of the categories briefly. I am not going to go through every single one of the recommendations, but when we get to questions, if you have questions about specific recommendations, I'd be happy to go into them in particular. But right now, I'm just trying to give you an overview of where all of this is going still. So appropriate land use policy. There's a number of different ways for us to think about this. One of the pieces is really thinking about something I know you're already working on, which is about adding housing density to downtown Bellflower. Another opportunity is to extend the wonderful streetscape work that you've done on Bellflower Boulevard, south of Flower Avenue, to really continue that personality and that brand farther south on the Boulevard. I encourage you heavily to adopt a vacant property ordinance. Vacant property ordinance, there are examples, there's a link to examples in the report. Vacant property ordinance says the impact of a vacant property is significantly negative on the property values of everybody around you. It, in fact, is costing the community money when properties are being left vacant in a neglected kind of way and that there is a fee associated, a significant fee associated with leaving something vacant. I believe this is an important step to show vacant property owners that the community is furious about reuse or about sales. If somebody has a vacant property because they're doing renovation, that's one thing. But if it's just sitting there, I believe that there's a responsibility to the rest of the community and the rest of the property owners around them. And we can talk about that. There's a great opportunity also to just refine the retail frontage use requirements so that everybody, especially in specific parts of Bellflower Boulevard, requiring that the storefront be active, requiring that the first set of feet when people walk into a storefront be blinds open, be something interactive with the community. Obviously, adopting an artisan manufacturing land use definition is going to be a part of that. Fixing the zoning south of the freeway to create a mixed-use village that really is consistent with the investments going on at the exchange and the other properties nearby. And then looking at amending the licensing and permitting for music and alcohol because there are tons of spaces that are, as things reopen, are going to want to be all of the above. They're going to want to be production, retail, they're going to want to have events with alcohol and live music. And this is the direction we were going in even before the pandemic, but that the experience that we can have in these spaces is a big part of the draw and a wonderful way of bringing the community together. And I would say, out of all of that, if I had to pick one thing to start with, is first, adopting this artisan manufacturing land use definition as a permitted land use so that when businesses who are production businesses and want to do production and retail in a storefront on Bellflower Boulevard want to come to town, that there is an easy trap for them to get in. It doesn't have to be an exception, it doesn't have to be a special use case. It's just a permitted use. Then, there's a whole bucket of how do we support businesses? And I firmly believe that not only do we need to have a clear sense of how we're going to use land and how we're going to use property, but we also need to understand how we're supporting small businesses. And when we're doing both of those pieces together, that's where the magic really starts to happen. So I recommend that you launch a business development program for existing businesses. Continue to work with the folks that we found in this program to understand not only how do we help them continue to have stable businesses in light of who knows what's coming next, both from this pandemic and whatever comes next in our world, but how do we help them scale if that's what they want to do? And there's a number of wonderful business programs out there that I recommended in the report as well. I also suggest creating a startup program. Startups, either part-time or full-time businesses are wonderful ways for people to both have an exciting opportunity to contribute to the community, but also to create second and third and fourth kinds of incomes for their families. So when we're looking at helping people really break out of cycles of poverty, especially when we're looking at small product businesses, if somebody can sell a product as a second business, then it is often one way that people can break out of those cycles of poverty. I will also look at establishing a city commitment to spend local. This can be on locally created products, it could be food procurement for events, it could be services also, but a lot of cities are starting to create this specific target, either percent of discretionary funding or, well, usually it's a percent commitment, to spend local because being your own anchor investor in your local businesses is a great way to help create that local investment commitment. I think there's also a wonderful opportunity to create a cool business owner meetup. You have amazingly cool business owners in your downtown already that I love getting to meet. If you can create the opportunity for each of them to host an event so more people who are business owners in the community can get exposed to each other's businesses. And then create more of an opportunity for more people through training. And this is really the idea of looking at who is being left behind. There's great, wonderful programs of people who are returning citizens from incarceration and programs to help them learn how to make products and sell products and learn entrepreneurship because the reality is that a lot of people who have come from incarceration have a hard time getting hired for jobs. And if they can learn how to be their own business owner, then they have a way to make an income for their families. The cool business owner meetup is where I would start and really just starting to work with the folks that we met through this program, asking them what would be most effective and really giving them the support that they, I believe, deserve for being part of downtown. Third is really looking at buy-in from real estate owners and developers. I think there's a really exciting opportunity to work with some of the existing small-business owners in town to become property owners. And there's wonderful programs, particularly, there's a regional revolving loan fund that's out of federal funding that's accessible to them or bringing in L I S C as a potential investor in some of these spaces or loan creator for that. This gives them a way to control the fate of their costs if they are a stable business and they can afford this with the right kind of loans and really allows some of your business owners to be beneficiaries of the upside of what's coming. As downtown, particularly the north end of it, gets hot with the train station coming in, as investments come in, if they are a property owner, then they can choose to stay or they can choose to sell and invest that money back into their family or into their business and get the upside of what they're helping to create. I do encourage the city to also continue to own key parcels along the way and make sure that the right kinds of businesses and really vibrant kinds of businesses are coming into downtown. But the other thing that the city can do in ownership or in leasing key parcels is making sure that there is affordable space for micro businesses to open up as well. I suggest you look at additional development potential south of the freeway. I think that what the two developers down there that are investing in properties are really creating something very exciting and to look at how to add to that and particularly looking at housing as a part of that, which is not there as part of it right now. And how do you really create a sort of a southern-end village south of the freeway? I think there's also an opportunity to encourage rear-facing micro retail spaces, particularly on the northern end of the Boulevard, on the buildings that face the parking lot. A lot of those properties are very deep and going to be hard to fill with one business anyway. And if we carve out micro spaces that are rear-facing, it's a wonderful way to incubate businesses within your own storefronts that could then grow into larger storefronts as well. Great opportunities for more murals, but also really thinking about a pop-up shop program. And this can be as part of vacant property, this can be as part of outdoor kiosks that the city creates. There's a number of different ways to create pop-up shop programs, and we provide examples of that in the report as well. The city ownership of key parcels is the piece that I would say is most important about all of these to continue and to really invest in creating spaces for these kinds of businesses along the way. Fourth is the effective promotion and branding. There is a lot packed into each of these, but three of them is a lot to work on. So I think there's a great opportunity for the city to up its game on social media and create an echo chamber with the local businesses where the local businesses are on social media and the city helps promote the businesses that are in the city too. There's a great potential to create a website for local product businesses, and I've shared a number of examples of other places that have done that. And third is to promote the city's successes, all of the work that you're doing to support your local businesses. Please, please tell your stories of what you're already doing. You're doing so much for local businesses. If you start publicly sharing those stories broadly and really promoting them, I think you're going to continue to attract more businesses into the community, more investors into the community, and really, it's a great way to just brand the community as a place to do business and be a part of the family of businesses in Bellflower. And then the last group, I know this is a lot to take in, is programs to draw business owners and customers into downtown. I think there's a wonderful opportunity to use your existing public spaces for more community events. More programming outdoors is going to be great to bring people into the community and to create programming even just for the community where families can come together, where the citizens of Bellflower get to wander downtown because something is going on there. One example is moving the farmer's market downtown already, the potential to move it downtown already and to potentially add a monthly artisan market to that, really reaching into the community, into home-based businesses, and inviting people to become part of this artisan market and showcase not only what they're doing, but have a low-risk way to test out their products. There's a wonderful opportunity to partner on vendor pop-up events with some of your existing businesses like the outdoor space, Steel Craft, and some of your other businesses like the fashion designer, whose name is eluding me right at this very moment, Storm.
Stormy Weathers.
Stormy Weather, thank you, thank you, Jim. They're all interested in doing pop events, they all want an easy way to get there. And you have to make it like the click of a button so that entrepreneurs who are doing a thousand other things can also create these events that are good for the city. And just making sure that outdoor dining and programming is really easy to do, and we have some ideas about that as well. So moving the farmer's market downtown is by far, I think, the easiest and the fastest of all of these, but also looking at how to add a monthly artisan market to that and really start building up your own pipeline of businesses. And I think you've probably heard me now say this a number of times. Part of this is about growing your own sector, right? There are people who make things in the city, there are opportunities to host them in the city. Start doing that purposefully and they'll be able to move into your storefronts as well. So what comes next? Out of all of this, it's really the question, I go back to first, why do we do this, right? Your community, the people we interviewed, the small group discussions, people want that place to stroll and visit shops. They want a place to come together. And I know we can't quite do this yet, but we're getting back there soon. People want that new development alongside the older buildings, that modern and old-town feel. They want the mix of the housing alongside the shops so that they can be a part of it. And they're really looking for places to create more good-paying jobs and places with a diversity of business owner that really reflects the true diversity of Bellflower, which is just phenomenal. and places with a diversity of business owner that really reflects the true diversity of Bellflower, which is just phenomenal. Um, and they want the shops that cater to residents and to visitors. And really, it takes very purposeful actions to create that mix in the community and retain it as investments continue to flow into the community. Uh, and ultimately, as we talked about, people want a place where everyone feels like family and feels included. And people have that feeling now, and the potential to do that in downtown is just wonderful and amazing. So, what is all of this? Um, the boost report is a toolbox. Um, my recommendation to you out of all of this is pick your first tool and start using it. Your community is absolutely worth it. I loved meeting everybody in the community, and I don't say that as emphatically as that every time, I promise you. Um, the people that you have are just unbelievable and passionate and, and truly believe in what Bellflower is and what Bellflower is becoming, um, in downtown. And so my, my number one hope for you is to, um, take the boost report, um, pick the actions, the, the top three actions or the top one action that you feel that you can approve and move forward with in the short term and make it happen. And then, it's an iterative process. Take the next ones out of the toolbox that you think makes sense and go from there. So with that, I will stop sharing my screen. And I'm happy to take any questions, um, or comments.
All right, thank you, Mr. Pia and Ms. Prias. Um, before I turn over the, um, the questions to my colleagues, um, I just want to make a couple of comments. Um, uh, we've met via Zoom and, uh, first of all, I'm, I'm really impressed with the depth of your analysis. With the very short time that you spent on the city, uh, doing this evaluation, I, I'm, I'm really at awe with what you have accomplished. Uh, and I, and I say that very sincerely. Uh, reviewing your report, I just can sense that you really are very passionate about this. Yeah, it, it sounds like this is your, uh, this is your mission in life, it sounds like to me. So, and, and I really appreciate that. And you, you hit a couple of things right on the head. One is, um, I'm, I'm really, I'm really appreciative of the support from our community. I, I think something that the, you mentioned about, uh, the, uh, residence, a piece of trust on the leadership of the city. And it's something that I really value so much because it's the trust that, that counts the most and something that, uh, that's something that we earn over time. And the other thing that I really want to point out is you, that you really hit right on the head is the vision of downtown. Lots of foot traffic, that's what we envisioned to be a long, long time ago. That's why I always, I always, it reminds me of the, the, one of the catalysts in the redevelopment of downtown is Belmont Court. Belmont Court is a couple of restaurants and, and it's a three-story building. And you hit right ahead on the, the height of the building, it's high. So the look and feel of downtown to me is right there. If you look at Belmont Court, to me, that, that, we can replicate that along downtown Bellflower. I, I think we're going to come a long way. So with that, I want to ask, uh, Councilmember Hamada if you have any questions or comments?
Yes, thank you, Councilman. Um, I am definitely pleased with what I'm hearing. Uh, first want to thank staff and, and then Alana for, again, you know, making it back and, you know, bringing this forward. And I can see that Alana is a true planner. Uh, she's, yes, definitely passionate and I definitely would echo, you know, the, uh, comments. Uh, maybe some of the, uh, some of the questions, I, maybe I wanted to get some more detail on your contact with the community, and it's great. I, again, yes, we, uh, again, love hearing those comments and, and it, you know, definitely of, of reiterates what, you know, I hear out there too. Um, did, did the Chamber of Commerce participate with you?
Jim?
They were invited and we didn't get any responses.
Oh, interesting, all right. Uh, got to work on that. Um, uh, I look at Alana, I, I've, I've been, um, catching up on some of your articles. Uh, I just, uh, read your one about discovering your city's maker economy. Uh, the one that, uh, was, uh, that went through the NLC. And I, I thought definitely that was very, uh, definitely thought-provoking and, uh, definitely, uh, uh, really hitting on, you know, community and, uh, you know, what, uh, uh, what things can happen where you can blend again. As, I mean, as you mentioned, both modern and, you know, traditional, you know, some of the past and, and, and definitely, I've always seen Bellflower as, uh, you know, Main Street, USA sort of, you know. Yes, I, I, I love the modern, uh, you know, additions, but I definitely, uh, love some of the, you know, some of the remnants that still remind me of my youth here in town, you know. Uh, uh, you know, the Holiday Theater, you know, which is now a church, but, uh, and, uh, just remembering going down to, always visiting the small businesses, you know, look at the Hobby Shop and, uh, things like that. And, uh, and definitely, I, I, I'm definitely pleased with the transformation of, you know, South Bellflower Boulevard. Um, you know, with the Penny's Building, uh, with, as, as now the Exchange. Uh, I think I mentioned, I don't know if I mentioned this the last time, but, uh, it does remind me of some of the, some of the times from my youth that I maybe sometimes don't want to remember because I used to have to go to the Penny's and, uh, do that walk of shame up to the mezzanine to find the husky pants, so. Uh, but it, it's all great stuff, and this is, this is what I, this is why Bellflower is, is great. And, uh, I, again, I think you've done a very excellent job on, uh, on, you know, creating this, you know, snapshot of Bellflower. And, um, um, uh, some of your, uh, recommendations are just, you know, Jim, right there. And, uh, again, I, I, I see these businesses as more, you know, complimentary to what's, what's happening. I, I, I don't believe it, it, it would, I would see a full takeover, so to speak, but it, it, it definitely complements what, what's, you know, happening downtown and, and, uh, uh, to include this opportunity, uh, I think, uh, it's, it's, uh, uh, definitely an excellent, uh, uh, option for, uh, again, what we're doing to, uh, to help, uh, you know, create this, you know, thriving downtown as, as, as our focal point and then, uh, you know, move from there. Because I see other areas in town that could benefit from this type of setup too, so. Um, one of, one of the other comments in your report, uh, made mention of the DFD and, uh, and then I, on, on your PowerPoint, you kept it as fix rather than or, oh, what could eliminate? So, uh, I, I was possibly somewhat concerned with that comment about using the word eliminate, but I, 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 I do understand where, where, uh, again, you, you were coming from. And, uh, I see more of a maybe that fix and, uh, to create, uh, the opportunities. And that's where I think what, what we're striving for, so. Um, and, uh, again, I, I, I agree, land use sometimes needs a bit of refinement and, uh, definitely, uh, uh, some new things to inject to, you know, transform it to something that's going to work and also, uh, and that's feasible and, and so on, so. Uh, uh, to me, yeah, what's, yeah, happening in like ball commercial is, I believe there was always the opportunity, uh, to, to create the incidental manufacturing component, e- even with, you know, places that, that, that retail and, you know, to make their own products and, and, and sell them. And, uh, so I think, uh, this, 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 uh, this endeavor is, is definitely, like, you know, happening throughout, uh, this country. Uh, one of the other questions, uh, of Alana is, uh, when it starts working with mixed use, uh, have you experienced any conflicts with some of the retail or the, uh, food places? Uh, um, and with the residential, uh, um, because of what they produce? Sometimes the odors create a, a different scent out there in, 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 in the area. Uh, has that been an issue in some of your, your past projects?
For the most part, there aren't any clashes like that because the uses that are coming into artisan manufacturing into a, into a storefront are going to be generally restricted so that their negative impacts or their external impacts aren't going to be any different from anything else allowed. So if you would, you know, you would, you probably wouldn't put, uh, a metal shop in on a storefront because of the amount of noise that was going in unless you had some noise restricting requirement, which would then make the space unaffordable to that business. So the kinds of businesses that we're going to attract to these storefronts are generally going to be consumer-facing anyway. Um, and so, um, we don't really see those kinds of conflicts coming up in a mixed-use environment. The biggest threat to them, um, is, is actually the reverse, that as mixed use comes in, the price of the space goes up. And so we start pricing these businesses out of the face. And so that's one of the reasons that I suggested the city stay involved in some of the properties because we do want to retain some amount of affordable space for the long term for these businesses as well.
I did like your comment about, uh, you know, Bellflower Boulevard being wider than taller. And, uh, I definitely agree that, uh, I can, I can envision the, the three-level buildings uh, to create, uh, this, this closer-knit community. Uh, possibly going higher might, uh, create that, uh, the darker shaded, uh, no sunshine type of the area sometimes, but, uh, I, I mean, like downtown, it's like, you know, LA downtown, every, every time I go to downtown LA and, and driving one of the streets and trying, and, and, and when I come to a stop and peek out the window and, and stare at that ten-foot, uh, ten-story-high, twenty-story-high building right there and, and, uh, and I always had that feeling, I'm always in the shade, so. Uh, but, uh, I think for, for Bellflower, uh, that, that scale i- is, uh, you know, definitely appropriate. The, 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 the lower level three, three-story, uh, you know, range, uh, is definitely a, a fitting, so.
Um, and if I may, just to add one point to that, I know you guys are also talking about housing separate from this.
Yeah.
Um, I did not mean to, to suggest three floors is like the only option. It's just, some more height is going to help it feel like a urbanly closed area. And having, in fact, a place that has a diversity of height along the street is more interesting and more engaging. So five stories in certain places are, is going to be great as well, and I wanted to clarify from my perspective.
It'll likely be off the boulevard, a little further back, so. All right, uh, no, again, uh, my last question is to staff. Staff, what do you think? Jim?
I saw, I saw Jeff's mouth moving and.
Oh, Jeff. Well, yeah, I, 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 I think we have some work to do on the code.
Sure, sure.
So we're, we're reviewing the housing element as we go, and this is going to, but we absolutely, the DFD has been flawed. We've done that for some time, so we definitely have to take a, for the whack at that. And, uh, I think this is the perfect time to do it, and I expect that we'll see some of the changes in the code come in this summer. So, I, uh, in fact, I'm going to guarantee it, so.
All right.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, staff. All right, thank you, Sunny.
Thank you, Councilmember Hamada, uh, Councilmember Sanchez.
Thank you, Councilmember Sunny Manz. Uh, well, good morning, everyone. Um, first I'd like to say, uh, thank you, Alana, for your presentation, uh, very insightful. I really love reading your material and your, uh, report here. Uh, over the weekend, it was just a fascinating report to read. Um, I'm not going to try to, uh, reiterate some of the comments that my colleagues have made or even Jeff at this point in time because I do agree with all of those. I think those are all very important from the housing density stuff and everything that they've mentioned. So I'll, I kind of just want to touch on a few things from the, uh, kind of going from one to five that kind of stood out to me that I, I think would like to make sure get included in this process. Uh, for the extended street landscape and improvement of the stuff of Flower Avenue for that specific bullet point. And I don't know if this is where it would live, but I, I didn't see parklets in here. And, and to me, I, I think that is going to be a key component. We talk about it being wide right now and we need height. Well, the reality is it's going to take time to get height. Um, I think that with COVID and what we've seen in our restaurants have invested in outdoor dining, I think parklet, parklets are going to be key to this conversation, so I hope that we keep that in mind. So I just wanted to share that, um, and bring that again to the table. Um, again, please, if I missed it, uh, let me know, but I don't think I saw it anywhere in the report. Okay, thank you, uh, so I don't want to have that in there. Um, on the adopt a vacant property ordinance, Jim, I believe we currently have, or sorry, uh, Beth, we currently have an ordinance that meets that. Um, Alana, were you able to review that ordinance by any chance or that, that policy that we?
As far as I understand about your current policy, the fee structure is not significant enough to have any impact.
Okay, perfect. So then that's maybe something I will have to reconsider and bring back to the table and find other ways. Perfect. Um, I'm sure staff would, Jeff, would you agree with that too then?
Oh, yeah, it'll be exciting too. I, I mean, there's, there's going to have to be some legwork that we have to do on that before we come in. I agree with Alana, I'd have for some time and, and I've talked to Jim about even more punitive fines on some of these properties than what we currently have. So, I'm on board to do that, but I also understand there's going to be some blowback from the Chamber and some of the business, uh, in the community, but we'll get there. Um, and I think that it's time to engage on that.
Perfect, love it, thank you guys, appreciate that. Um, that, that's it for that one section, again, because I, my colleagues touched on the other things that were really important there, so I won't reiterate it. Um, on the item two, I'll focus on mentorship and business support. Um, I think you're, you're spot on, um, with creating that cool business owner meetup concept. Um, I do want to, um, uh, on the note of considering opportunities for more people to really, you know, engage, uh, we do have some really good nonprofits, uh, I'll, kind of lean on KCB. And, and I know that some of these restaurant owners in, in the community want to or are currently doing trainings and programs of those natures. And I believe that with a city partnership, it actually would allow them and open them up to apply for grants to fund these. So just want to, you know, echo, you know, kind of echo that and support that, um, that there's additional funding out there that wouldn't have to come out of general funds. Um, and staff, I can definitely, um, help on that end from the standpoint of grants and, um, helping us make sure that we're doing, you know, not doing that, but I know we're doing good work, but I mean, making sure that we're applying for grants that will promote these kind of, uh, programs that you and I was talking about, so just wanted to bring that. Um, of course, continue city ownership of key parcels, I thought that was key in the conversation for, um, item three. Uh, the one thing I would, I would also want to highlight on your conversation would be the, the pop-up shops. I think that'd be neat, especially if we, you know, with the whole even parklet con- concept or even using the, what we do for the movie nights outdoor in the back patio area. I, the one thing about that area is not so visible to the main street, so that would be my one, my one caveat there that how do we, we, if we, if we do these pop-ups, how can they be, you know, front-facing and things of that nature? But other than that, again, I agree completely. Um, on your fourth section, so these aren't really more, these aren't really questions per se, they're just my comments and my thought and my feedback. Um, promote city supportive local businesses, I thought that was spot on. I know we, I know from looking at the ledger that we do that, I know we support nurseries, we support the local restaurants. Um, but let's see, the move to the farmer's market to the downtown, I think that's, that's going to be an easy, you know, to-do item. I think it'll be great. Um, and that's, that's it. Um, I just really wanted to highlight some of those things and let staff know and let, you know, let you guys know where I stand and, and my colleagues know where I stand. I think this is an amazing report, I think it's one of the, um, fun reports that I've read, uh, since I've been on council. And so just whatever we can do, I'm sure I'll speak for myself, whatever I can do to support, um, absolutely. So thank you for the presentation and, and staff, thank you for putting the effort and time into, into really helping create that, putting that vision that we've had, and I know you've had on paper and, and finding ways to get to it, so. Um, with that, I will conclude my comments.
Thank you, Councilmember Sanchez. Um, Alana, um, I have, I just have a few questions. Uh, I want to piggyback on the, uh, the vacant, uh, property ordinance because right now we have an ordinance. Uh, I want to piggyback on the, uh, the bacon, uh, property ordinance because right now we have an ordinance for the maintenance of vacant properties. And I'm really glad that you are kind of pushing this one step further. That's the development of those vacant property. And, uh, the more I think about it, uh, I'm not, I, I, the way I think about this issue is not just downtown, it has to be citywide. And so I'm not just focusing on the loss of sales tax. To me, the bottom line here, the very bottom, in terms of the benefits, the financial benefits to the city is to increase value because of construction. So I think that should be the baseline. So regardless of whatever it is, whether it is for office or restaurant or whatever it is, they will have to increase the value of the property because of construction.
Or investment.
Pardon me?
To add to that.
Or investment.
Whatever it is, but to me, that's the minimum, that the financial benefit going to the city is the increased value because of the property tax.
Right.
Regardless of business, regardless of the use, they will pay that.
I agree.
So I, I think that's something that, um, I, I would really ask staff to look into, um, so that we can, um, we can have a lot of discussion about this because I, 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 I get it. There's going to be some kind of pushback. But I, I think if we have a kind of a reasonable baseline, I think the, uh, the burden on the property owners should be, will be reduced significantly.
And the burden that the other property owners around them are care, that who are carrying it is very significant.
Exactly.
That it depresses the, the neighboring properties, their value significantly.
Yeah, it's a lot of it. And you know, you've seen the history. A lot of this has to do with the trust arrangements that have inherited these properties and we're three generations into some of these trusts and it's all pre-prop thirteen, uh, properties and they're paying next to no taxes. And they're happy to rent it out for a bucket of quarter square foot, take their checks for a couple hundred a month and we need to quell that immediately. I mean, that's just, you know, I think it's worth the death of all this city. So.
And, and based on our experience on the, uh, the maintenance of vacant properties, there's, it's, it's very challenging.
Yeah, yeah.
And now we're going to take it one step, one step further. So I, I, I think we're right.
The irony of that is to me is, you know, one of the properties we're focused on dearly. I'm looking at trying to, and maybe enacting forest maintenance on it. The property owner has actually been extremely responsive in cleaning up the property, you know, and, and every level and yet we're turning around, looking at training the screws to them and, and, and double burdening them. And it's kind of frustrating. So it's frustrating in every way. When you see a property trying to do the right thing, yet there's still all these issues. So
Right.
We need to find some latitude there as well. It's not, it's, I, I think one size does not fit all, is what I'm, what I'm seeing.
Yeah, and I, I don't, I don't think it can implement that overnight. I think it's going to take some time.
Right.
If you give them some kind of a reasonable timeframe.
Right.
For the property to be developed, I, I think it's going to be a win-win.
I agree, yeah.
And, and my, uh, my, uh, looking at other places that have done similar things, um, the, the, the fee structure has to be significant enough that they're either going to invest and develop the property or they're going to sell it. And selling it to a great new owner who really wants to be a, a lively part of downtown is a great outcome. So it's not like they don't have options. They're always allowed to sell the property if they don't want to have to deal with the fee.
Yeah, right.
Jump in on that, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Um, I, I, with Jeff's comments, I, I definitely agree. I think there has to be a balance, right? If someone is doing the right thing and they're moving through and they're going through, for example, I think we have one property right now that had to go through massive environmental studies and everything else like that. They're doing the right thing. They're, they're moving in that right direction. I, I, I would not want us to burden them even further. It's those that, that I think to Councilmember Inez's point, right? Um, that, that, that aren't doing anything, that aren't moving. They just put up a sign and say for lease, but they're not actively really trying. We know who those are and, and those are the ones we really got to go after. But those that are trying, I, 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 there should be some leeway for those folks and, or exceptions, I guess.
And, and I think we could build that in the code. I mean, I think we could show, yeah, if it's, it's obviously the investments or it's not, yeah.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and, uh, thank you, guys.
All right. Very good. Thank you. All right. Second question, I'm just kind of curious, Ilana, about the, the, uh, extending the street landscaping. Uh, you're focusing on the south. How about, um, are you, are you okay with the landscaping from, um, down from the, the fire museum all the way to Alondra?
I'm not sure I can picture the street off the top of my head.
That's a loaded question.
Okay, somebody warned me about what I just walked into.
To, to me, downtown is from Alondra all the way, all the way south, you know? So I just want to make sure that we don't forget that section. And you focus on that, uh, when you mentioned about the, the rear-facing businesses. And I think you're alluding to two major parcels, which is the Aldi and then the, the Smart and Final. So I'm questioning about, how about the landscaping? I think we need to do it also.
I think that's Mr. Sanz has a subtle reminder that we may have been a little remiss in looking at the landscaping.
I'm glad you picked it up right away. Thank you. All right. Uh, the next question is on the, um, you mentioned about the, one of the easiest things for line use is the, um, the definition. Right now, it, I think the best thing to do here is to make it the permitted use.
Agreed.
Right? But I think we need to be very careful in terms of what an artisan manufacturing is.
Yeah.
And I'm, I'm, I'm kind of putting the, uh, the burden on, uh, Ms. Corpus about this definition because if we look at, let's say, if we allow any manufacturing, but it's concrete, I don't want to see, uh, manufacturing of cinder block on downtown Bellflower. But powder will be okay. So I think it, it's going to boil, it's going to boil down to what those permitted is, what's definition of manufacture, light manufacturing is. And speaking of manufacturing, um, based on your experience in terms of the current economy now, you kind of mentioned the range of employment from one to fifty. I was kind of thinking that fifty will be heavily, uh, labor intensive in terms of downtown. I can picture about pressure on parking, pressure on traffic. If you bring in fifty employees to one particular shop. And what I was thinking is I have, I have my favorite, uh, trophy and flag shop in, in San Francisco. He reduces staff because of advances in technology. Uh, because I used now using a lot of laser instead of manual thing. So he cut his staff to let's say about more than half. He used to employ about fifteen people. He's employing now about six to seven. And he's doing more. And I'd like to see something like that in downtown. It's manufacturing, creating trophies, creating flags. And people can see a lot of these, uh, cup holders, um, you know, all this kind of things. Those are neat. Uh, in terms of downtown manufacturing. So I was kind of thinking about, is it fifty kind of high? Because I'm thinking more about the impact on the traffic, the impact on parking, once we allow this fifty employee shops.
You have some, I, I think in general, that I'll give you two pieces. One is, uh, about the artisan manufacturing land use definition. In the report, there's links to other cities that have passed, um, these kinds of amendments. Um, and, uh, I suggest them as models for what you want to create. A lot of communities have, have created a specific land use called artisan manufacturing that's different from light manufacturing. Um, because they want it to be small, predominantly small tools and not noisy, like what you were talking about. Um, when we're talking about the size of the businesses, I would also look at the footprint of the buildings that you have already in downtown. Um, if there's a twenty-five thousand square foot building that is vacant, it probably had more than fifty employees in it once upon a time. Um, so, um, whether or not you want to fill those spaces with a single business or whether or not you want to make sure that they're divided up, you have to start thinking about those decisions with some of the property owners. Whether or not property owners have an expectation of filling a large space with a single business or whether or not there, there are ways to help them subdivide the space. Um, in general, for your downtown, I would probably look at businesses that really cap out at about twenty employees because of the size of the spaces that you have. I think that's probably going to be the best fit. And the reality is, is that most small-scale manufacturing businesses are under twenty employees. But if you have, for instance, a brewery that gets really successful, it might have a taproom and a production area and be doing distribution out of its back door. It might have fifty employees, but it's all depending on sort of how they use the space. Is everybody full-time? You know, what's the rotation use of the space? So, um, I would suggest that you look at the proposals that come in. Um, and that it's more based on, um, the square footage that folks want to use. With artisan manufacturing, we're generally going to see anywhere from, let me just think off the top of my head. We're going to ju- any, and see anything from two hundred square foot, two hundred square feet per employee to five hundred square feet per employee. So it's really going to depend on how efficient are they with their space? What are they making? Um, but to me, it is, is the question of, um, you know, what are those negative externalities? Are they creating noise? Do they need an eighteen wheeler? If they need an eighteen wheeler, maybe they're not perfect for downtown. If it's van deliveries and pickups, that's going to work much better, right? So just thinking through that kind of detail with the community.
Yeah, okay, thank you. And, and I piggybacking on Councilmember Hamada's question about the, the smell. The o- the only, uh, the only business I, that I remember having an issue with smell was the manufacturing of sriracha.
That I'm not sure I'd want to be.
Don't bring up my Irwindale days.
I thought I should bring it up. Anyway, all right. So the other question I have here is on the, uh, well, uh, because I'm not that touch on the D F D. Re- regarding what the city is doing in terms of supporting a small business. I, I'm not trying to be defensive here, but, uh, are you, are you familiar with the Small Business Assistance Program?
The federal small, small business?
No, the, the city.
Small Business Development Center? Yes.
From the city.
Yeah.
And, uh, and, and I, I'm kind of, I'm kind of curious about that because, uh, it, I don't know if we are lacking the promotion uh, to make it available to businesses. Uh, Jim, can, can you chime in on that?
Sure. A lot of it, it might be confusing some stuff. We have a local program in which we provide facade improvement grant money or forgivable loan money and, uh, bit, uh, building, uh, improvement funds for some of these older buildings. And, um, yeah, it could be, we have, uh, in the past couple of years, we've had a limited budget. So, uh, with the potential downturn, we reduce the budget on that program. And so, uh, yes, we, we could probably promote that a little bit better in the downtown and actually go out to facades that need help and talk to those building, uh, owners directly and try to get them involved in the program. Um, so there could be some increased promotion for that type of program. I think some of the other things that Alana is talking about are uh, programs to help business owners be successful and, uh, financial planning for businesses, budgeting, marketing programs and so forth, those types of mentorship programs that maybe staff isn't super equipped to do. We can walk them through our development process pretty well and get them through these grants, but sometimes they need, uh, how to, how to organize their financing. We, we met with a, a certain business owner during this process and they said they were interested in eventually purchasing. And a potential opportunity came up and when they went to try and do that and purchase the building, they found that their finances weren't in order well enough to actually commit to doing that application process. So what are those resources that we can provide some of these business owners to have their, their financials in the proper format, you know, that they can present to a bank or to the revolving loan fund so that they can get those loans to potentially acquire the building that they're in and create that, uh, local ownership that Alana was talking about during her program. So I think it was a combination of both grant or forgivable loan funds and programs that we already have and then trying to augment that with, uh, business planning type activities and mentorships with our businesses in the downtown.
Yeah, I, I'm just using that as an example, Jim, because, um, we have that program. And, uh, Ms. Praes is suggesting another program like mentorship and other assistance programs. So what I want to do is get some lessons learned, uh, from the current program. Why is it not being utilized? Because if we put in another program and it's not utilized fully, then it kind of defeats the purpose. So I want to make sure that, uh, because my feeling here is to make this successful. I mean, I'll be very honest about this. The city has to make some kind of financial investment. We need to provide some assistance, whether it's mentorship, whether it's, uh, purchase of properties, things like that, we will have to invest because otherwise it will not make it. That's my, that's my strong feeling about this. Because to me, I, I mean, my vision of a small-scale business is uh, to me, a typical business is someone who is home-based right now. To me, it's conditioning as an example. How do we attract this person now doing a successful home-based business to go to downtown, expand the business, but at the same time, pay the rent, additional rent that he or she's not paying? To me, that's, that's a very classic example on how we can transform a home-based business to a downtown, small artisanal business. So in that case, if that is the case, then we, we will have to, well, well, we will have to provide some kind of assistance, whether it's for mentorship or financial assistance. Yes, Mr. Stewart?
Just the, we always have to be cognizant that we can't trigger the prevailing wage standard, though that just quells all the business. So I do believe there is some reasonably good news this year. Carl, if I can, um, we are able to invest what up to six hundred thousand without triggering prevailing wages. That, do we learn that to be true or not? I forgot what the standard was.
After July first of this year.
Yeah.
It's, uh, six hundred and eighty is my recollection off the top.
So, yeah.
Percentage.
Yeah. So there's hope on the way. I mean, that will, I think six hundred and eighty gives us a fair amount of latitude to, uh, help jumpstart these things without, uh, triggering prevailing wage and I'm hoping that's true. I, I do believe that this is going to be a, like all of our downtown, it's, it's one stop at a time. And I think of all the things I've heard today, aside from the fact that we need to change our codes, that we need to really significantly revamp the D F D, that purchasing properties and maintaining some of those properties downtown is going to be part of our future from here on out, I believe. Um, we may not be landlords, but we're certainly going to be moving in and out of properties, uh, because, uh, it's just absolutely necessary.
That will, that will significantly help us, that become, when, when that becomes effective. You know, you see the life first, right?
Yeah, that's on the prevailing wage item. Yeah. And, uh, that has, and I forgot to mention that when I spoke, that that has been a deterrent to people because they can often the, the benefit of the program was outweighed by the cost of doing it prevailing wage. So we had some people decline using the program because of that.
Okay. All right. Well, I guess I'm going to help on the way.
We're going to be back before the council very soon on purchasing initial property here. We've got an idea, so.
Okay, great. Wonderful. And, uh, and final question about the, the use of T U P. You touched on Ms. Praes about T U P, temporary use permit. Uh, Ms. Corpus, can you, can you tell us, is it really burdensome to apply for a T U P?
Uh, to be honest, it can be to the business owner. In the, the process is pretty straightforward. Um, they'd have to submit an application at least fifteen days prior to the event. And then it depends on the scale of the event. If they're going into city parking lots, if they have a huge crowd that they anticipate on coming, um, if sheriff's departments involved. So if it's a larger scale event, there is a lot that goes into the T U P because there's several review bodies that need to take a look at it before we issue the permits. Um, for something simple like a sidewalk sale or um, a grand opening type of event, those are pretty straightforward, but it does still require that the business owner submit in an application, draw up a site plan and pay a fee. So I, it, the T U P section of the code, it ranges from small-scale type of events to large-scale type of events. I will say for the smaller scale, the process is more straightforward. Um, it could be daunting to business owners just because of the amount of paperwork that's involved and, and paying the fee. Uh, for the large-scale events, it is a lot more, a lot more work on the business owner's part.
For some more scale, is there a way that we can streamline the process?
Um, we could, we'd have to redo the T U P process or the T U P section of the code. And we'd have to specifically outline what those type of events would be. But I would say, yes, we could do that.
Uh, the part of the hiccup there is the plans that, uh, you know, that laymen try to present.
Yeah.
And we end up working, asking back and forth so they can do their street plans or whatever they need to do. So we end up helping them quite a bit, uh, getting through their T U P processes. I don't know if there's a way we can make it easier. There may be a way we can provide more assistance. And I think that's really going to be the key. Because it's the process, we have required information due to liabilities, et cetera, that we need to have. Just the ability of them to present that information, that's the challenge. So I think that's where we're going to find a way to make it easier.
Okay, if we can take a look at that and we see. And if we can take a look at that and we see, and see what we, what we can do to assist our small business. For, for large one, they need to go to the process. I'm, I'm for that.
Absolutely.
For the small ones, if we can do something to help them make it easier, just like, for example, let's say, you have a small shop and they want to do a small, small kind of sale event, things like that. We can make it easier for them. I think it's, it's going to be so much the better.
You know, if it's something we like, we've always provided a lot of assistance, you know?
Right. Oftentimes, the planners are at the counter drawing the site plans for them. They'll print out an aerial. They'll ask them what kind of tables and chairs or equipment they're going to have in the right of way. So there is a lot of handholding. But I can see from, you know, a business standpoint, you know, if they just look in terms of what the application process is, if they see a site plan, a lot of them aren't going to have that on hand. And a lot of them are going to be pretty stumped on how to make one.
Yeah. And I want to add one thing here. It's wonderful to have staff who are completely helpful like this, but it only works if people know that that's the method. It ends up, and this is, I think, true of you guys and pretty much anywhere that has great staff, it's, it's still the best-kept secret. So one of the businesses we did talk to talked about wanting to have an event and hitting a wall because of it. And probably because that business owner didn't know that they should just walk in and that somebody would walk them through all the steps. So unless the business owners know very clearly, go to this desk, go to this place, and that that's widely marketed and the outreach on that is really extensive, then you do need to create something that's online that is more streamlined. So you're either investing in streamlining the process or you're investing in the marketing.
Or it was simply a bad event that we just didn't support. So it may have been as simple as that. We don't know. Sometimes we have some crazy ideas, so.
It sounded like a great idea, but yeah, who knows?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Ms. Price, do you have any slide on the next steps?
The next steps is you guys pick. The, the next steps aren't up to me anymore. What comes next is the, the community, the council with the staff, obviously, picking a few of these actions to take on as the first action. And once you complete them, come back to the report as a toolbox and pick the, pick the next few to move on. It's not that you have to get them all done at once. It's really this iterative process that keeps moving you forward.
Yeah, Sunny, we owe that to you. So Jim and Beth put their heads together. And I think we can, we can outline a plan of what we're seeing for the next six months pretty easily that we could put the weekly out to you. And then you'll start seeing the, the measures come through the council. What we do, there's four, there's probably three or four things we're going to do pretty quickly. The rest, we're going to have to live and learn a little bit. But I mean, we'll get to, we'll, we'll move forward as quickly as we can with the stuff that we know we need to work on. So.
But do you see any significant barriers implementing this program?
No, I mean, I mean, it's, it's all means, resources, time and energy. I mean, barriers, yeah, but not insurmountable. It's just how much elbow grease we're going to put into it and we might strike lightning. Who knows?
Mr. Stewart, can we ask, are there any of those things that were listed in Alana's report that are really troublesome or red flags to you guys that you kind of don't want us to pursue? Or are we good to go with most or all of those items that recommendations?
Councilmember Hamada.
I think I pointed, you know, one or two out. I, I think, again, in, in regards to the DFD, in, in the report, it said eliminate. And, and I was, that to me raised concern because I think there's still opportunity to, to blend, you know, various uses, so.
Well, Ray, if I might be, the DFD is a defensive measure for us. That's basically put in place to ensure that we don't have any, I, I can't even use the word I usually use with Jim describing the type of crappy development we get on doing that. But that's the point of that. I mean, it's getting to the point now as we're learning with Martin's products down there, that we have to amend the DFD, make it more flexible at a minimum.
Yeah, and fix it. That's what I meant.
We can't hold back the defense just yet. At some point, I hope we get there, but we're not quite there yet. So.
Why don't we eliminate it? I, that, that's the point I.
I don't see us eliminating that.
Yeah, and that's what I agree.
Still need that barrier because we have some other issues coming up. Yeah.
Oh, yeah, definitely. Oh, I think the red, I think, I think the steps, I think, or the, the recommendations, I, I think were very comprehensive. And I, I think we have, we have the opportunity to, to pick and choose. And, 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 and things will work. I think so. All right. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Sanchez.
Thank you, Chairman. I, I agree, just the DFD was the only one that, but I think it's been explained well on how to kind of go through that. And other than that, no, I think everything else was, was doable and attainable. But Ms. Prue's comments, right? We don't have to, we can't do it all at once. We'll do what we can right away, pick the easier ones, kind of, kind of hit, hit them and keep going and keep improving. But other than that, no, I think that was the only concern that I stood out. So thank you.
All right, thank you. Well, regarding the DFD mailing comment is, the DFD was there for a specific reason.
Right.
Very specific reason. So, so anyway, so I, I like the plan. So I want to, I want to make sure that we're kept informed in terms of the, the plan for to implement all these suggestions. And I, one thing that is very compelling that was mentioned by Ms. Price is we need to do a better job in terms of promoting what we are doing. I think that becomes very, very apparent. And I, and I, as again, I don't want this thing to be one of our best-kept secret in the city. So we need to promote this. And whatever we can do individually, we will do it to help promote it. So. With that, any other comments or questions? I think we're on the right track here.
No, I just have one closing question. Is it true, Alana, that you're going to be a published author soon? And is that what I read in LinkedIn?
The book comes out June 22nd.
Okay. We're looking forward to it. So make sure you let us know so we can go out and make sure that we have our copies. So.
Absolutely. I'll let you guys know all about it. I'm very excited. So it's called Recast Your City, How to Save Your Downtown with Small-Scale Manufacturing. And if I had met you guys last year, you would have been in the book. But it's all, it's a how-to DIY kind of book to how communities can do exactly what you guys just did.
Yeah, we're going to look forward to the talk.
You're ahead of the game.
I'll see, I'll see you on the talk show. So you're promoting it, so.
Are you going to be in Good Morning America soon?
I will. I'm aiming for the stars, so we'll see where I get.
Why not? Okay. So in terms of for today's action item, is there a clear, we have a clear direction to staff?
I, I think so. I mean, I, I think you guys hit it on the head. I didn't see anything objectionable from my perspective there. And I didn't hear it from the council. And I'm glad that you focused on the DFD because that was the only problematic area that I think that we do need to defend our turf a little bit on, but not forever. And we certainly can make some minnows in it. So otherwise, I think we're good.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. So and number two is, I really want to ensure that we, 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 we continue to engage our small businesses and those potential business owners. I think, is there a way to keep them informed as far as what, what transpired during this meeting?
That's your call, Jim.
Yeah. Oh, absolutely. I've asked Anika to be on this workshop with us so she can listen to everything that's going on. And we can begin promoting this. Some of the recommendations in there were to pump up the social media aspect of what we're doing and to even add a, kind of a separate website to regarding small, small-scale manufacturing in the downtown. And we've talked about that already. And we have some ideas bouncing around in our heads as to how to do that and to, to really start getting this out and letting people know what we're doing.
Yeah, especially those who participated in those workshop and then the one-on-one meetings. I want to make sure that they, they're kept informed.
Absolutely. They were actually all invited to this meeting and some could not make it. But all those people that were participants in this process were all invited to this workshop.
Okay. Wonderful. Any, any closing comments, questions?
Mr. Chair, yeah, one more question.
Councilmember Sanchez, go ahead.
Thank you. Jim, I want to end with one. The, the bid, the Business Improvement District, is that going to, that's going to be in this component, right? You're going to, you're going to incorporate that in.
It, it kind of is. It's, it is by, it's by association. It wasn't part of this overall report. But I think that's because Alana knew we were already working on that. And you'll see some action on that occurring this week. Some letters are going out to all the property owners and the two potential bids this week. So we're moving forward on that and trying to gauge the, the interest level of the P bids and see where and who we need to start talking to, to, to get them on board with that.
That's perfect. That means you were ahead of the game and you guys were ahead of the game in bringing this because it aligns exactly what, what we're doing this morning. So that's it. Councilmember Inez, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hamada, any final, any final comment?
Yes, thank you. I just want to commend staff again. I think, you know, the past number of years, it, it's definitely been quite noticeable that we've been on a path of being business-friendly. And we've been seeking opportunities. And, and I just wanted to commend again, Jim and his staff and Jeff and everybody, you know, just, just again, jumping on things that are, you know, that are innovative and that are, that are, you know, happening out there. And it's, it's just great to see. So we just got to keep, keep on it and, you know, make the necessary changes. And, you know, and definitely Bellflower has, is becoming more and more of a, of a place to go to. So, okay, great job, everyone.
Okay. Well, again, thank you. Thank you again, Ms. Price. Thank you, Jeff, Jim, Beth, for your work on this. And thank you for all who participated in this call. And especially thanks to those who participated in the meetings and one-on-one meetings and workshops. So please stay tuned because there's a lot more things coming up. So with that, this meeting is now adjourned. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. And have a blessed day.